I'd like to call this meeting of Lakewood City Council for Monday, May 20th. To order Madam Court, please call the roll.
Councilmember Barth.
President.
Councilmember Boke.
President.
Councilmember Brantsetter.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whalen.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Do you have a forum?
Thank you. Now would you all please rise with me in a moment of silence in honor of our men and women serving overseas, followed by the flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to do the intertribal ones? It's just, it's a... Just a little... It's this. This is a presentation. A certificate of appreciation. A couple of points. We now move to proclamations and presentations. The first is a recognition of the South Puget Intertribal Planning Agency. And I'd ask Ms. Mitchie Russell and Mr. Chris Key to join Deputy Mayor Whalen at the podium for a certificate. Now photo up. Come on up. Well, turn over here so we can get into the camera.
Little camera.
Yes, little camera opportunity. We, as a city council, live and breathe off all of the efforts of our many volunteer organizations and individuals within the city of Lakewood. And as many folks here know, we put on, as a city, a Lakewood Youth Summit, primarily sponsored by the youth on the youth council, but principally, we learned how much effort and support you all provided as well. The South Puget Intertribal Planning Agency provided funding for many of the key parts of the first Lakewood Youth Summit, which was held on April 13th. The funding provided grab bags for all attendees, including the youth council members, including a cinch bag, notebooks, phone rings, water bottles, adulting 101 books, which I probably should take home for my own kids, mood bracelets, and many, many more things. Food was also provided for all participants and speakers, and the South Puget Intertribal Planning Agency also partnered with the Any Occasion Catering Organization to provide a great lunch for the event. And I think Mary Moss and a few of us had an opportunity to taste the great lunch at the event, so we appreciate that. Most importantly, a keynote speaker was also provided, in terms of the funding for the keynote speaker, Gayasi Ross, who presented tremendous information for the benefit of all the attendees there. In addition, Ms. Chris Key, Ms. Mitchie Russell, and Ms. Deborah Gibson attended all of the Youth Summit planning meetings, where they provided great leadership and guidance to the youth council members. This event would not have been possible without their contributions, and we look forward to future partnerships. And so on behalf of Mayor Don Anderson and all of us council members here at the city of Lakewood, we want to present to you this certificate of appreciation, presented to the South Puget Intertribal Planning Agency for your continued support and all that you've done to help us with our city's youth. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And because you helped participate and cooperate in the betterment of Lakewood, we present this wonderful City of Lakewood Challenge Coin, which we had made several years ago, with a Latin phrase on the back, which I will even not attempt to restate in Latin, but cooperating for the prosperity of Lakewood is what it means. So thank you very much for your help.
Thank you.
You each get a coin. And I'm going to give you guys a chance to say a few words, if you would, and then we'll take a photo.
There you go.
Just a few words. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for this honor. I really appreciate it. We had a wonderful time working with the kids and hope to work with them maybe again next year. So thank you.
Yes. Exactly what she said, "Thank you."
So now if you'd join us down in front for a photo, please. of the 29th District, representing a substantial portion of Lakewood. This last legislative session, he's probably caught, just about caught his breath and caught up on asleep by now, this last legislative session. Senator Conway was instrumental in obtaining a number of appropriations benefiting the city of Lakewood. And I invite you to the podium if you'd like to tell us about your successes in this session, and we'd like to thank you publicly.
First of all, I'm sorry for the confusion here. My aide did not tell me that the meeting got moved to July 1st. I wouldn't be here on July 1st anyway, because usually my family and I are going on a vacation at that time. But, you know, we finished on time. I think you all know that. A 105-day session, got done on time. Very pleased about that. And very pleased that we had made a major investment in mental health. I think, you know, for this, this, this city in particular, mental health is a critical issue, and it's important that, even though we have problems, obviously, with the state hospital here and the placement of people in the community, but I'm going to tell you that our state has made a major investment in mental health this last session. And, and, and the... I read one article that suggested between the capital and the operating budgets, about $2 billion. So this is a major step toward addressing an important need. I think that we're also engaged, obviously, in helping address the major problem of homelessness in our communities. We all know it's a combination of mental health and, and housing issues, and it's a complicated problem that all cities are trying to resolve and solve these days, but it's not an easy one to solve. But hopefully, we did put more money into the, into our state housing trust fund, so that'll mean more low-income housing to help you in terms of your work to help solve that problem. You know, individually, you know, we, we worked on Lakewood issues. I mean, you're looking for some money for Spring Brook Park, we got that money for you. We were, we were looking for some efforts here in terms of transportation budget, a study of this rapid trains issue. We got it. We got a little bit of extra money to work with JBLM. We passed several bills that were important to JBLM, and so I know that JBLM is a major concern of this city council, because it's one of your major players. And so we're very pleased about that. We were trying to get a little bit more money to address the, the problems with the airbase and getting, but we've got at least an installment of a half a million dollars for you there, but hopefully the, in talking with some of our military advisors, they can help leverage more money with that, and we can go about making sure that we, we address these issues that are important to JBLM and its, its, its presence here in our community. I also passed a bill, I don't know these numbers, I won't file, let the staff, they probably know the numbers better than I do. Actually, sponsored a bill that had long time been in the legislature to try and get a capital budget, um, pocket place to help military communities like your own accommodate some of the military needs that you have. And a major bill passed this session, and hopefully it'll serve as a springboard to help you on your needs and help Tacoma and Parkland and other areas as well that have, that are being impacted by the base. And so, all in all, I think it was a good session. You know, I think we addressed your needs, and we, hopefully, we got the money, of course, that you asked for in terms of accommodating the extra cost of providing police support for the state hospital here. That money got into the budget as well, so overall, we did well. I think, for those of you who have a higher ed background or are interested in higher ed, there was a major investment in higher ed, in the state need grant. And so that's going to be important for all our families and all of our kids who are looking at higher ed as their next, next stepping stone. So I think it was a good session. I've heard positive things from the voters about it, so, you know, we always try to, can do a little bit better, but this, this budget was, there were some taxes in this budget, and that'll, of course, be of some concern to some who'll talk with you, I'm sure. But overall, I think it was an important investment in our community through this budget. And this mental health issue, you know, has got to be important for Lakewood. And of course, you have your, your preferences on how that money should be spent, and I recognize that, and I supported Senator O'Ban and some of his efforts to address some of the problems associated with that issue, and we'll continue to work on that issue. So thank you. I'm sorry for disrupting you here tonight. You're probably not prepared for me, but...
Thank you for coming, Senator. You're always welcome. We really appreciate your, your efforts on our behalf, and it's even better when there's successes like this year. If you could come down and join us for a photo. I, I would remind the folks on the podium here that the senator didn't do this alone. He had the benefit of part of his education at the University of Oregon.
I actually have a PhD. That's surprising to some people.
I'd ask Mr. Thomas Perrinho, the general manager, to join me at the podium.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Well, it's always, always a pleasure to recognize some of the outstanding businesses in the city of Lakewood. We're, we're fortunate that we have our own economic drivers here locally, and we hope that as the months and years pass, there are fewer and fewer people that need to commute to work through the mess that is our transportation system and can stay right here at home. So thanks for creating jobs here in the local community. Tucked into Lakewood's industrial park system, manufacturing plant of Sun, Cascade Sanoco, a company that was formed in 1992, is a freestanding joint venture between Cascades, Inc. and Sanoco Products, Inc. Ltd. Combined, the two companies have more than 160 years of history in their respective industries. They each are also $4 billion-plus companies. Cascade Sanoco is a leader in the packaging industry, creating products that not only meet the changing needs of clients, but that are also sustainable, biodegradable, and innovative. The company has two locations in the United States, Lakewood and Birmingham, Alabama. Two other North American locations are in Quebec. Inside Cascade Sanoco's Lakewood manufacturing plant, 50 employees are responsible for three machines that churn out the company's products. For more than 25 years, Cascade Sanoco focused on meeting the paper industry's needs by creating barriers against the elements. Its business model recently shifted to developing new product lines geared at consumer packaging, the consumer packaging industry. Following its mission to pursue a green platform of sustainability and biodiversity, the company has rolled out compostable and biodegradable barrier solutions. It is because of this position in the industry and the ability to be innovative and adaptable to a changing market that the Lakewood City Council recognizes Cascade Sanoco as its May 2019 business showcase. I have, for you, a, a recognition...
Thank you.
...that we'd like you to hang prominently in your place of business in the Lakewood pen, and if you'll step forward and take a picture with the council? And would you like to say a few words while they're coming down?
Sure. A couple of words?
Yeah.
We've been, we've been around for almost 30 years in Lakewood, and we hope to be around for another 30-plus. We've supported hundreds of families around here. It's been a really successful joint venture between a Canadian corporation called Cascades and a north, actually, South Carolinian, Carolinian corporation called Sanoco. I was just noticing how beautiful this city hall is, and if you look at the, the columns that, that support the, what do you call that? The awning or the, the walkway? You can see that spiral mark in the concrete. That's Sono, made by Sono Tube. Sanoco staple product is Sono Tube. So all the concrete structures in the world are Sanoco's forms, for example. Just to show you who Sanoco is. Cascades is the largest Canadian recycler, so we recycle millions of tons of paper every year. And they married and decided to do a joint venture here in Lakewood in 1992, and the venture makes, if you go to restaurants and you guys order food and you take food home, all the takeout boxes that used to be styrofoam and end up in the ocean and all that are now paper-based. They're 100% recycled, recyclable, with brown fiber that's all made here in Lakewood throughout North America. Laundry detergent boxes, Kentucky Fried Chicken buckets, and soon, we'll, we'll have the first coffee cup that's biodegradable. Jason, I see you drinking one that is not.
Oh, it is. It's paper.
Yeah, it's paper, but that's going to end up in a landfill. Ours is going to end up in your compost. So this is who we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay down here for the next item of business, which is a proclamation declaring May 29th to 27th, 2019, as National Public Works Week. But I'd like to have our Public Works Engineering Director, Mr. Paul Gusec, join me. You know, this is, uh... That should be something near and dear to my heart. I keep collecting engineers in the family.
Me too.
You know, some of them even have personalities, you know, so...
Okay, I'm used to that.
But I, engineers, engineers are great. They just love building stuff. And, and I think we get more compliments here in Lakewood for building things. Roads are torn up, or concrete's going down. The citizenry seems to be happy, so thanks for all you do. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of people. And whereas these infrastructure facilities, services, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our transportation, water sewers, storm drains, streets, solid waste collection, public buildings and other structures for our citizens. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community depends greatly on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitudes and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, the Lakewood City Council do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through 27th, 2019, as National Public Works Week in the city of Lakewood, and do hereby urge all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works personnel make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Proclaim this 20th day of May, 2019. Don Anderson, Mayor. Paul, would you like to say a few words on behalf of your department?
Thank you. First thing, good evening, everyone. On behalf of the public works employees working for the city of Lakewood, I do want to thank you for this proclamation. This year's theme is "It Starts Here." So you may be asking yourself, what does it mean by "it starts here"? Well, we like to think about almost everything. Infrastructure that we rely on in our daily lives starts with public works professionals. Growth and innovation starts with public works professionals. Mobility, as you know from transportation, starts with our public works professionals.
Mobility, as you know from transportation, starts with our public works professionals. The security starts with public works professionals. A bit of an odd one, but actually, if you look at it and think about it, that's very attributable to public works professionals. Healthy communities start with public works professionals: water, sewer, stormwater, transportation, and this goes on. The bottom line is that our citizens' quality of life all starts with public works. As public works professionals, we do deal with a wide variety of issues and needs every day. We do the planning, the design, the construction, the maintenance, repair, and replacement of our systems. We work with individuals in our community, both groups of large and small, as well as individuals. We work with local agency staff, regional agencies, national agencies. We're called upon to have a wide depth and breadth of experience and understanding of a wide variety of different issues. Our staff have to be both capable and competent in what they do, as well as able to quickly and efficiently move from one area of focus to another. The calls that come in every day could have us working on anything, potholes, the streetlights, to vagrants occupying the stream corridor. Public works employees operate in the immediate and the future, like yourselves. We take care of what we have now, we build the needs for tomorrow, and we plan for the needs of the distant future. So, again, I thank you for the recognition of our work through this National Public Works Week proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you.[681.01][681.01][applause]
We now move to the public comment portion of our agenda. This is when any member of the public may speak to any issue of interest to the city, whether or not it is on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The yellow light comes on at the 30-second warning, red light comes on when your time is up. Please identify yourself by name and city of residence, such as Mary Moss, Lakewood, Washington. I would note that we have a public hearing later in the agenda, and if you wish to have your comments on the public hearing on record, you should wait to make those until then, but that doesn't preclude you from speaking at the open public comment at this time. First person we have signed up is Mr. Dennis Howgan.
Dennis Howgan, Lakewood, Washington. You can get the rest of this circular firing squad on YouTube.
Thank you. The next person who signed up is Mr. Glenn Spieth.
Glenn Spieth, Lakewood. I've written a short letter, both to the city council, the city manager, and the citizens of Lakewood, and it concerns Lakewood history, which I've been involved with since long before we became a city. The city and its citizens need to support Lakewood history by saving the Lakewood Colonial Center clock. Now, you each have a handout, which goes through this and has a photo of the clock. It was originally placed in Seattle in 1911, moved around a number of different sites in Seattle. It finally was acquired by Norton Clapp, who owned the Colonial Center, and it was moved to the Colonial Center about 1980. The area that it was placed has gone through many transitions. The original store that it was in front of was the Colonial Center Carriage House Furniture Store, Ethan Allen, Multi Care, and FedEx Building. When that store was torn down, the clock was put away, taken out and put away, and I've tried to get the clock in safekeeping and work on the restoration and so forth. Anyway, the Colonial Plaza upgrade is a great time to include the clock. That was in the original plan, at least for a while, for the plaza. Nothing seems to have happened since, but that clock's been around Lakewood for a number of years. The clock should be restored to its original glory and as a piece of local history. The 1937 Colonial Center Theater would be a good area for the location. The current engineering cost for the Colonial Plaza Upgrade grant was $2.9 million. The contract-winning bid was $2.1, so there ought to be some funds available that could cover that. Anyway, I hope that you can...
Thank you.
...support.
That's all the people who've signed up for public comment, but that doesn't preclude you from making comment. If you wish to, please step forward. Is there anyone else who wishes to make public comment? Seeing none, declare public comment closed. We now move to the consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of May 6, 2019. B, motion number 2019-28, authorizing the execution of a contract for services with Pierce County regarding road and traffic maintenance services. C, motion number 2019-29, authorizing the execution of an inter-local agreement with Lakewood Water District for the construction of a water main through Fort Stillicum Park along Angle Lane between Stillicum Boulevard and Elwood Drive. D, motion number 2019-30, appointing Wanda Elder to serve on the Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board through May 21st, 2020, and Andy Gurnan to serve on the Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board through May 21st, 2021. E, motion number 2019-31, appointing Paige Hanson to serve on the Lakewood Arts Commission through October 15th, 2020. F, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board meeting minutes of March 28th, 2019.
Thank you. Is there any item which any member of the council whispers to have removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item D.
All right, item D is removed. Any others? I had the entertaining motion for to approve the consent agenda minus item D.
Still moved, Mr. Mayor.
It's been moved and seconded by, moved by Mr. Simpson, seconded by Mr. Bulkey, that we adopt the consent agenda as amended. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. While motion carries, we now return to motion number 2019-30. Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I understand that this motion is based on the need to fill some unexpired terms on the Lakewood Promise Advisory. And thus, that results in the characterization of it, of there being one person appointed for a two-year term and another appointed for a term that would be slightly less than one year. With respect to Ms. Elder, who is the individual that this action appoints for just a single year, and we're at the, you know, at the end of a school year and the work of this committee sort of is low as with the school year, you know, I believe that a one-year appointment is unlikely to really be productive for a new member to do that. And if we, when we move forward for action on this, it would be my proposal to change Ms. Elder's period of appointment to be for three years, and that I think that the Lakewood's Promise Board would be better served rather than having a one-year appointee.
Except we have staggered terms in this. I ask the clerk and the city attorney to illuminate us with respect to the available terms for appointment.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council... Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as I understand, the question is whether or not you could appoint somebody for an extended period when the normal term would just be to finish an unexpired term. I believe that with this particular body, since it is a creature of this body to begin with, I think that you could exercise that authority without undue challenge. However, in terms of what people are expecting, in terms of if there's another applicant out there somewhere who's watching the terms, it might have an impact on that, and I would just want you to be aware that someone may be out there pining for that next opening during the regular term, and if they are, then you've precluded them from their opportunity. But other than that, I don't think there's a concern.
And I know there was more than one applicant, more than, more applicants in positions at this point, so we had to select. I entertain a motion. Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Was there, that, the motion, there wasn't an amendment. It was, I have the motion as 2019-30 as presented. I would note that there's normally no controversy with respect to reappointing someone...
Correct.
...in the short term generally rolls into a full term, unless there's, the exception to that has been when the committee as a whole has an objection to someone's participation, whether it's counterproductive or absent. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Branstadter.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and I wouldn't want to put you in the position of ahead of time predicting what appointment you might make a year from now, that, so, I would move the, to amend the motion to, for the expiration of the appointment of Ms. Elder to be on the anniversary of her appointment in 2022.
Is there a second to the amendment? Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Okay. Discussion on the amendment. Mr. Whalen.
Yeah, I'm generally fine with this, but just a couple of things to remember. We have staggered terms for lots of these citizen advisory boards' positions, so if we set up kind of a precedent of filling partial terms kind of by council fiat, then it kind of disrupts the whole process. But I don't have any problem with regard to Ms. Elder. She's a fine candidate. She can always elect not to serve the remaining two years if she so desires. She's certainly been a Lakewood resident for many years.
Any other discussion? Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to come back to what I understand to be the main point here. We have a process here, and I think the process should be honored. I don't think, as Deputy Mayor Whalen alluded to, I don't think we should be by fiat deciding who and when. We have a process. I think we should stick to that process, and I think we should go back to the original motion or the original item or motion number here on the, on the agenda, which is to appoint this woman to the term specified through May 21st, 2020. Thank you.
Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Lakewood's Promise Board, while it has some community members on it and their terms are staggered, and this amendment would keep Ms. Elder still staggered from the term of Ms. Gurnan, but the majority of the board is actually appointed, you know, based on organizational membership from the school district, from the two colleges, things like that, and movement through that board takes, takes place as changes in positions and staffing there move forward. And the idea of looking at a short-term appointment and deciding to extend it, we have had some instances over the past eight years where we have taken that action of where, rather than appoint a person for a period of time that is a year or shorter, but we've gone ahead and to keep the board at full strength, but also to keep it moving forward with viable members rather than placeholders, that we have extended and moved to make full terms. So, I think that, you know, we have a great deal of emphasis on youth and of advancing them, that earlier in this meeting, we recognized a community organization that helped greatly with the youth summit, and that we've seen a good deal of expense or success of Lakewood being an excellent place for young people and of doing that. And so, in the interests of keeping the Lakewood's Promise Board vibrant with engaged members who can actually engage in and bring their expertise into the long-term benefit of the community and of the young people of this community, I'd urge adopting the amendment to extend... to extend the period of appointment of Ms. Elder.
Okay, we'll vote on the amendment. Will all in favor of the amendment please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Madam Clerk.
Motion passes. Two ayes, five nays.
No.
Oh, I'm-
Call.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Branstadter?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss? Councilmember Simpson?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Whalen?
Aye.
Councilmember Barth?
Nay.
Councilmember Bokey? Mayor Anderson?
Nay.
Motion fails. Three ayes, four nays.
Now move to the unamended motion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. I would note, though, I accede to one of the two or three powers, if that's the right word, that a mayor has in our weak mayor form of government is to make the initial appointment. And once that appointment is made, that's what you're voting on. You don't amend the appointment. You approve it up or down. I would have acceded to anything, but procedurally, I think we need to remember that. We now move to the regular agenda, public hearings and appeals. Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing on the six-year 2020 through 2025 Transportation Improvement Program.
For this, we have Mr. Ott.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The city is in the process of updating its six-year comprehensive improvement program, or Six-Year TIP. Updating the program is an annual process required by statute to assure consistency with comprehensive planning goals and identification of transportation needs. The hearing tonight is an important part of the process, affording the public the opportunity to comment on the program prior to its adoption. The draft 2020 through 2025 program was developed over the past few months. It was reviewed by council on May 13th and the Planning Commission on May 15th. The document was placed on the city's website, and a request for comment was made through social media, as well as the hearing this evening was advertised in the TNT. The TIP identifies over $163 million of transportation-related capital improvement projects. The program does not include routine maintenance and maintenance activities or wash-dot-led projects. These functions are taken care of outside of the program and funded by others. The Six-Year TIP is a planning-level document, and as such, the program is not fiscally balanced with respect to the current and anticipated city revenues. Implementation of the TIP occurs through the city's biennial budget and capital improvement program process. Although important to evaluate the anticipated revenues, the primary purpose of adopting the TIP at this time is to gain consensus on the city's future transportation priorities. Working through the revenue needs is an ongoing process which culminates every two years in the city's adopted biennial budget. Any comments received from tonight's public hearing, along with comments received from both the city council and the Planning Commission, will be reviewed and evaluated by staff. All modifications will be incorporated into the final Six-Year TIP, currently scheduled for adoption at the June 3rd city council meeting. We look forward to receiving comments from the public this evening, and we are requesting the council open the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ott? We'll now proceed to the public hearing. The procedure for this is very similar to the public comment. When called upon, you have three minutes to speak with the yellow light coming on at 30 seconds and the red light coming on at the completion of your time. Please identify yourself by name and city of residence. However, the difference being that in this section, in this hearing, your testimony will be on the record and is limited to the topic of the Six-Year 2020-2025 Transportation Improvement Program. First person who's signed up is Mr. Dennis Haugen.
The 2025, I find to be sad and humorous because I think you have too many loose ends going on in this state that allow you to plan with any kind of accuracy to that far out. Milton Friedman said a long time ago, a welfare state must have very secure borders in order to survive. With the politics out there now, open borders, fighting national security by elected officials, can fill those roads up with interesting traffic. Who knows what they could look like in six years if we have six more years of this? I can't help but call King County Council idiots. We can't ship illegal immigrants out of the King County Airport. We have to take them to Yakima. That's the kind of thinking, that's the kind of non-thinking that we have going on up and down the coast. And if we let that kind of thinking go on, what in the world can you plan for? The freeway and the roads here will be a mess. All those people that come in for services, government services, they're going to use the roads too. What's it going to look like? Roads will be a mess. There'll be tents all along the road, probably some carcasses there for people cut up some animals in order to eat on their way to whatever services we got to offer. We don't have a whole lot of elected officials that are enthused about a secure border. Maybe we'll even see foreign tanks come running up high five, you know? Better start doing some serious thinking. Try to get some of the other elected officials in other cities and towns and counties to start thinking serious.
The other person who signed up is Mr. Glenn Spieth.
Glenn Spieth, Stelliken Boulevard. In 2006, the city got a federal grant to improve Stelliken Boulevard from Bridgeport to Farland. 14 feet was taken off the front of my property for sidewalks, gutter, and road widening. In early 2007, that transfer was, was processed. Few years later, DeLonge Drive-In came in, the road was widened, the sidewalks were put in up to my driveway. That left the end of my driveway sitting 10 feet out in the right of way. I lost four mailboxes because people didn't move over and kept driving straight right onto my lawn. I finally moved the mailbox back eight feet, and I requested the city restripe the street so that people would move over. That helped, however. As a consequence, my property, or at least the front of my property, became a mud hole because my mailbox is eight feet into the lawn. People use my front yard as a turnaround for Stelliken Boulevard. No sidewalks, just a mud hole out in front. After moving the mailbox, I didn't have any trouble with it being hit, but the mud hole isn't the greatest. Cars use the lawn for U-turns. Lockburn students normally use the south side of Stelliken Boulevard to walk to Lockburn. And the idea of sidewalk gutters and so forth was to help students traverse the areas. I know that there is a lot of trees along Stelliken Boulevard that make you go out in the right of way in order to even walk down that side of the street. Please accelerate the TIP for this particular area. Shouldn't have to wait 14 years, plus five, plus however many more years. Thank you.
That's all the people who've signed up to give public testimony to the public hearing on the Six-Year TIP. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public hearing? Please step forward. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public hearing? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. We now move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the council?
There's none, Mayor.
New business? Is there any new business?
No, Mayor.
And we move to reports by the city manager, Mr. Coffield.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. A few updates for you. Tomorrow afternoon, the National Transportation Safety Board will be holding their board meeting to release their findings on the probable cause of the train derailment on 17 December 2017. That will be occurring at 1:00 PM Eastern Standard Time, 10:00 AM Pacific Standard Time. So one of our staff will actually be watching that on, online, and hopefully by the end of the day tomorrow, sometime this afternoon, tomorrow afternoon, we'll be able to report to you not only what the findings were in terms of a probable cause, but also any recommendation that NTSB might have for the folks here in the state of Washington. I think, as I communicated to you last week, the recommendations are just that, they're recommendations, but we'll see what the state of Washington decides to move forward once this information is made, made public tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon. Your next work-study session, which is next Monday on May 20, I'm sorry, next Tuesday on May 28th, because Monday is a holiday, it's Memorial Day, will be a review of the South Sound 911 governance update. This was something that had been previously presented to this body, along with the West Pierce Fire and Rescue Board at a joint meeting about a month ago or so. So the status is on the, on the, on this inter-local agreement by all the original South Sound 911 members, which includes this body here. The City of Fife Council has actually approved it, and the West Pierce Fire and Rescue is expected to vote on theirs on June 3rd. Tacoma is expected to vote on June 25th. And Lakewood, if you're okay with what's presented to you on next Tuesday, we would, we would ask that you docket that as part of your June 3rd regular meeting for your consideration. Puyallup is expected to docket this item sometime in June, and then Pierce County likewise, they have a, a process that they need to go through, so they would be looking to do that sometime in June or early July. Once all of that's done, the City of Tacoma will then work on actually approving the charter, the creation of the Public Development Authority, and they have tentatively scheduled that for their council to consider and adopt as part of their July 9th meeting. So that's kind of the current status of all of this. One of the reasoning, one of the motivations for moving this forward now is to create some kind of certainty for when Pierce County goes to the bond market to issue the bonds later in June for the financing of the, of the new South Sound 911 facility, their public communication center. So that's the latest update that, that we have on that. And so again, Mr. Andrew Knightitz, the South Sound 911 Executive Director, will be here at your work session a week from tomorrow. You know, one of the, you know, people often ask me, you know, what keeps you up at night? There's really not a lot of things that keep me up at night. I actually sleep pretty well. You know, the deputy mayor and his art requests, maybe. No, actually, in all seriousness, I sleep pretty well. Actually, well, there's a couple of things. One is, you know, the big earthquake when that happens because we're going to be in a mess. But the other one is cybersecurity. And, you know, that is something, all we have to do is read the newspaper and the media in terms of what's, what's going on there. And one of the key priorities for our Information Technology Division, and actually thanks to this body for providing the financing to be able to do it, is to continue to put up walls to prevent unauthorized use or access to our systems for nefarious, you know, nefarious reasons. I'm pleased to report that last, late last month, we secured the services of a firm called FR Secure, and they tried to get into our system and get through our walls. And what they wrote was they were unable to leverage any vulnerabilities or misconfigurations to compromise the external environment. So that means they weren't able to get through, and that was after repeated, you know, you know, tries to try and do that. You know, of course, that was great. We know we have a good system, but of course, we need to be diligent and we need to, you know, maintain that, that security wall and ensure that it doesn't, it doesn't fail and we end up in a situation like other organizations, public and private. Likewise, you know, there's, it's an ongoing effort to communicate to, you know, our staff, our employees, that when they receive an email, you don't know where it's coming from, please don't click on it. Recently, Human Resources received emails from individuals that looked like they were city employees asking for their direct deposit to be changed to a different account. And it looked real until you hit on, you know, reply or reply all, and you see the email, or the wording that they use, or the actual check that they sent, so it can happen. Likewise, I know somebody was impersonating our mayor as well and asking for, for donations. So again, it's a little bit of due diligence on, on our employees' side. As a matter of fact, I think, I think I received an email, I think somebody said they were Councilmember Marie Barth, and I immediately picked up the phone. I think I called you and said, did this come from you? And you were like, no, no. So, but again, we have a good system in place, and we will continue with our due diligence there. And then likewise, if any of you receive anything that you think is weird or something, better just to hold on to it and check with us rather than hitting reply or forwarding it or anything like that. At the end of the day, probably the best thing that you can do with that kind of an email is hit the delete button. But again, I want to compliment Ken White and his team for their, again, their due diligence there. I think as I sent a note to you late last week that the Puget Sound Regional Council has made the decision at the staff level to move forward with the transit-focused growth, regional growth strategy, rather than taking on the stay-the-course or reset the urban growth strategies. Those were two other options that were considered. PSRC staff is basing this based on their initial review of the comments that were, that were received. However, they have yet to provide any responses to any of the comments, yet they have decided to make a decision that the comments are saying one thing over something else. The good news, or maybe, I don't know if this is good news, maybe for them it's good news, but they don't expect to have the responses to any of those comments until this time next year, in the spring of 2020. Meantime, based again on their review, they are moving forward with a draft Vision 2050 Plan, and they are going to develop what they call a high-level summary of all of the comments and present that to the PSRC board. But at the end of the day, I think this body can expect that as part of next May's General Assembly, it's likely that the Vision 2050 Plan will be up for consideration. I will say, having been through a number of processes that require an EIS to provide, to move forward with an initiative without first addressing the comments is putting the cart before the horse. So I'll just leave it at that. I know you folks are clear and understanding of how that process works as well, but I just wanted to report out what PSRC is up to. You know, Senator Conway was here, here this evening, and thank you, Mayor, for, you know, taking him on. You know, another project that, that he was a key champion of, two sessions ago, was securing funding for the Colonial Plaza. And we are looking to have a recognition and celebration event once that project is completed, and we're looking sometime in mid-September. And of course, we want to bring out our state delegation, including those from the 29th, since it is on the 29th, and recognize and thank them. So right now, we're looking at maybe an event on Saturday, the 14th or 21st of September, and maybe doing some, maybe, and if there's a day that doesn't work for you, or a day, so the 14th works well, Mayor? Okay. Probably has something to do, you and Senator Conway are going to be at the Oregon Ducks Football- Probably has something to do— you and Senator Conway going to be at the Oregon Ducks football game or something?
Doing it in Hawaii. I can't do it.
Okay, okay. But, so September 14th, we're looking to do a nice celebration and maybe do some kind of event, you know, in the evening from 5:00 to 8:00, have some food trucks, some entertainment, do something nice, you know, for the community. This is a real tremendous improvement project and is going to really put a shine in our community and put a shine in that location. And then unless the mayor and the council has any objection, you know, we have no problem following up with the owner of the Colonial Plaza and see if they're willing to donate that clock to us. And unless I see any nods going like this, we'll just go ahead and just, kind of just, you know, as a courtesy once again, and follow up with them on that. In the past, they have responded. One time, I think they responded it was going to cost $10,000, and another time, they threw out $20,000. But again, unless I hear any objection from this body, we'll go kind of shake the tree on that. Also, we want to thank our legislators from the 28th District for all their effort, again, two sessions ago, to help us get the policy language to transfer ownership of the park to both the City of Lakewood, as well as the footprint that Pierce College is on, to Pierce College. And as our fantastic city attorney keeps reminding me, we're almost there. We're almost over the finish line. I do think the state is going to use every last minute and hour up until June 30th to get this done. But certainly on the city side, we're ready to sign a document. And so what we would like to suggest is invite them to the first summer concert series in August and do a big ribbon-cutting ceremony up in the pavilion and, you know, really— yeah, really do something nice there and to thank them and invite Pierce College as well. So probably more to follow on these events. And again, if you don't think that's, you know, right, or if you have any other ideas, please let us know. So one legislative session has ended, so we're on to the next one, right? And one of our key legislative priorities was, you know, this military benefit zone, which is really a workaround on tax increment financing. So late last week, you know, a small group of our team got together, and one of the things that we talked about was, you know, the military benefit zone, we're not the only ones chasing that, you know, peeling off a portion of the state's sales tax. And so given that there's going to be a change in the House Speaker, what we suggested was that AWC put back on their legislative agenda to go with the full tax increment financing. Now that will require a constitutional amendment and a vote of the people. However, it's been done before. A number of years ago, it passed out of the Senate 49 to 0. You know, and as you know, the Senate, it was evenly split, you know, it was a bipartisan Senate. And it never got to the House because the Speaker said no. Well, hopefully, you know, we're going to have a new— well, we are going to have a new Speaker, so it's been announced. And hopefully, the new Speaker, whoever that may be, would be open to considering this. So AWC has agreed to do that. The other suggestion that we had was, rather than bringing back these new but same forms of tax increment financing, why don't we just go back to something that we know has worked in the past, either the LIFT or the LRF program. And AWC has tentatively agreed to that as well. So we're going to follow up and have some more discussions with AWC, as well as some other cities who again have the same kind of an interest to use that type of a tool in the summer and fall months. So again, more to come, more to come on that. The American Lake Management District vote continues, and Mr. Bucic asked me to pass on that as of today, they have received 90 yes votes and five no votes. The residents have until next Tuesday, close the business at 5:00 PM to vote. And so in a total of 329 ballots were sent out. So right now, we're trending, obviously, in the right direction. So hopefully, next Tuesday evening, I'll have kind of a final vote count for you on that. Councilmember Bokey, are the lights on? They should be on. 83rd Avenue? They should be on. Okay, because I was—I tried to look this weekend, but it was too late in the evening. I mean, too early in the evening because the sun goes down. You know, your meetings usually go to 10:00 or 11:00, so I was going to drive by tonight. But I've been assured that they are energized and that they're supposed to be working. I had a brief conversation—I had a brief conversation with the library director late last week, and so they have secured the services of Birken Associates, same group that did our sub-area planning process. And the reason they selected them is because they were so impressed with our sub-area planning process and the amount of community engagement and involvement they got from the Lakewood community. And so they are beginning to kick off some kind of a public engagement plan and activities regarding two new libraries in Lakewood, and they plan on doing that in the months of June, July, and August. And so I'm hoping our team can get together with their team in the near future and get some more detail on that. I understand they have some draft documents and such, but we haven't really had a chance to go through it. But that's the latest I have as of—I think it was last Thursday or Friday. So more to come on that. The work on the Interlock and Bridge was completed last week, so appreciate everybody's patience on that. Next up is a segment of Gravity Lake Drive between Bridgeport and Silicon Boulevard, and so it'll be closed from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM next Friday, May 24th, to do the striping on that. As a relative to your calendar, really this Wednesday is kind of a busy day. So Wednesday, May 22nd, at 4:00 PM over on JBLM, the 2-2 Striker Brigade is going to have their Memorial Day ceremony. And again, that's at 4:00 PM. At 5:00 PM, Clover Park High School is going to have their annual Arlington Project, and they were out there beginning this morning, putting out the markers of our fallen servicemembers. And that, again, is at 5:00 PM, it usually goes to about 6:00 or 6:15. And then that evening, beginning at 5:30 with a program kickoff at 7:00 PM, Greater Lakes Annual Vision of Hope fundraiser is over at the McGavick Center. And then on Thursday, over at Fort Silicon Park, the 2-2 is going to have their annual Community Day, and that goes from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM with awards from 1:00 PM to 2:00 PM. So I know myself, I'm going to try and stop by in the early morning hours to stop by and say hello. So in terms of the calendar, that's kind of the upcoming items. The last item I'd like to introduce is our fellow from the ICMA DOD Fellowship Program, and he is with us this evening, Mr. Kevin Grease, who is the Deputy Garrison Commander of U.S. Army Garrison Ryland Falls, which is in Kaiserslautern, Germany. He has joined our team. He has gotten off to a start. If you could stand up. There you go. Thank you, sir. And I know he's had a chance to meet some of you. And we're very pleased to have him to learn about the ins and outs, about how local government operates, and he's looking for some creative and innovative ideas that he can bring back to his team. Likewise, you know, anything that he can share with us so that we can use on our end today. Would like to point out a little bit of background of Mr. Grease. So he's been in his current position since September of 2017. Previous to that, he had served as—he had served at IMCOM Headquarters in San Antonio. He's also worked as a Deputy Garrison Commander for the Garrison Onsbach in Germany, as well as Garrison Schweinfurt, also in Germany. And then for a number of years, he served at a number of other garrisons in a number of leadership positions, including Director of Operations, Director of Emergency Services, and Chief of Plans and Analysis at the U.S. Army Garrison Humphreys in Camp Humphrey, South Korea. Prior to his Army career, he actually served in the Air Force for 21 years as a senior non-commission officer, where he served as a law enforcement superintendent, nuclear weapons system supervisor, and since it's the Air Force, those are actually real nuclear weapons. Installation Security Superintendent, and K-9 explosives and narcotics handler and trainer, again, all in the U.S. Air Force. So a very, very distinguished career. He actually has very, very impressive academic credentials as well. He is a doctor. He holds a doctorate in organizational leadership from Capella University. He also has an MPA from Harvard. He has an MS degree in human resource management and management information services from Leslie University, and a bachelor's education degree in workforce development from Southern Illinois University. So very outstanding credentials, and certainly, the United States Army and our nation is just, you know, very pleased to have him serving us. And he also has a number of other awards and, you know, kudos. But again, we're very pleased to have Kevin with us, and I think after the meeting, if the council is so inclined, he'd love to get a picture with all of you. And then he'll be doing a report out. So with that, Mayor—
I would note, with respect to Kevin, that this is his first trip to our area, but it's very important for him to scout it because his wife has informed him that someday when they retire, they're going to live here.
Apparently, she's already made that decision.
I said informed, I didn't say suggest.
With that, Kevin, if you wanted to say a few words?
Well, thank you very much. It's been an honor to come in with Lakewood. And one of the reasons why I told John, when this program came about with ICMA, there's about 30 different cities that are available for Alexandria, Phoenix, a lot of different cities, and I chose— Lakewood was my first and only choice. We're supposed to choose 10. I have a hard— I have a problem with authority following instructions, so I chose one, which is Lakewood. And the reason for that is because your reputation for being a sincere and dedicated partner with JBLM goes across the Army to where JBLM relationship with you and your relationship back is a model, a best practice. So I wanted to come. Obviously, I'm not going to spend my time doing non-best-practice stuff, so this is the great thing. And I've had one full day here already, and I can tell you right away that I've been on three different garrisons, multiple different communities, I've had to lead some different staffs. I just compliment you all for many of the things you're choosing to do, your Veterans' Court, your behavioral health interdiction, and your law enforcement stuff. Those are choices that you, like I was telling John earlier, those are choices that are not always made by cities when you're looking for cost-cutting, but those are investments, not the community, but individuals in the community. And I just wanted to say that right away, it's very easy to come away the very first day that this is a city council, a city, and a city manager and staff that care deeply about your city and the people that live in it. And it's just been an honor to be part of that and the conversations I've had so far and everything. I look forward to the rest of the week. I'm learning a lot as we go. I share whatever we can do back with resources and that kind of stuff. But I just want to say thank you very much for the opportunity of sharing your city manager with me and the time as I spend with any of you during the week. I know your time is limited, and I just appreciate that very much. Thank you very much.
Any questions for the city manager? Mr. Waylon?
Just a couple of questions on the Interlock and Bridge work. I noticed there were new signs up about no fishing off the bridge, but there are tons of people fishing off the bridge. I don't know if it's on portions of the bridge that they can't fish, is that correct?
Yeah, I think—
Or no fishing whatsoever?
It's supposed to be one side. It's supposed to fish on—it's on the east side.
Okay, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, but I just thought if we've got signage, it's kind of like the no crossing at the crosswalk sign in Gravity Lake sometimes.
You know, it's supposed to jump off the bridge into the water, too, but—
Yeah, I stopped doing that after you posted the sign.
Thank you.
You're welcome. On the May 28 meeting on the study session, do we have—is that when we have the Arts Commission recommendation and the packet coming for council's review?
Yes. Yeah, so that packet will include, if you will, the top three, including the recommended—the recommendation by the Arts Commission, and then also the scoring criteria, and then the scoring that the Arts Commission—
The packet that we did receive was not completely complete?
Well, then we sent out an updated one.
Got it.
We did send out an updated one, Deputy Mayor. Yep.
Very good. Appreciate that.
So that's loaded on your iPad.
Very good. That's all I had.
Okay. Council comment, Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Monday night, I attended the school board meeting, and during the council comment period, I shared with you that Lakes High School had won an award, and they were being recognized, and I didn't have all the details. So tonight, I'd like to share with you that it was the hip-hop dance team, and they won the state championship competition. And I was—we were talking, hopefully, that we can invite them to come to council. I do have a contact person to reach out to if you want to have that, and that was the Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Schools, Brian—I spelled it L-A-U-B-A-C-H. And the principal for Lakes, Karen Maugh Smith, to coordinate.
I think that'd be appropriate, even though I'm not hip and I can't hop anymore.
Practice. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, I attended the PCRC meeting on Thursday night. There were presentations by the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency. They're developing a clean fuel standard for the Puget Sound region, and that could be in place. They're going to vote on it, I think, in December. We also voted on a list of road projects to be forwarded to the PCRC. In that case, there was an Eatonville streetscape, 224th Street and Graham. It was—it's in the county, it's the intersection of the Graham Rural Activity Center near Graham Capousen High School. And actually, Yelm, which they're working on this Prairie Line Trail—Yelm is in Thurston County, but the Prairie Line Trail goes up towards Roy in Pierce County. And those are the three. Ordin was the group that was out, but they had a four-and-a-half-million-dollar ask. The total for the region, total availability for the region is $5 million. So the thought was that we should send up three smaller pieces, and they would—hopefully, one or two of them will get something, but it's a very, very stiff competition. Also, there was presentations by University Place in Dupont on all that they've got going on, and the economic development guys put up the site locator, and I guess we have that on our—the site locator called Invest Pierce County that the Economic Development Department developed. And then I went to the volunteer appreciation breakfast at the Technical College, and I will say it was very well done. Kudos to staff, nice turnout of volunteers, including the youth council that was recognized. And there were three members of the youth council that were there before they had to take off and go to school. So it was a very nice event. Thank you, Mayor, for emceeing it.
Mr. Brensitter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Saturday, I was there for the beginning of the fishing event for kids at American Lake. And it was, you know, something that was very successful. And not every kid came with a parent. Some came with grandparents, some came with neighbors, you know, some were—but, you know, that everybody seemed to really be having a good time. The Kiwanis was there supporting it. There were volunteers from the neighborhood and from scout organizations. And that the—everybody had a good time except the fish, I guess. That I also then went by the—where the Oakbrook neighborhood had organized a rehabilitation cleanup of their entry, you know, and they have an entry to Oakbrook that is not dissimilar to the gateway signs that we are putting up throughout the city. And they're—they have some pride in it, and they took place in getting it to be sprinkled to be able to go and do that. I am planning later in the month to go up to Seattle for the Puget Sound Regional Council General Assembly. Because I don't go to the PCRC meetings, you know, I don't really have an agenda about what's going to be voted on there, but to the extent that there is— about what's going to be voted on there, but to the extent that there is something that I need to be schooled on, I would appreciate some input from those of you that have an idea of the issues. I know the city manager spoke about the staff up at PSRC is going in a direction we didn't recommend, but I don't know that that's a matter that this session of the General Assembly is going to take up. I think, I think that they're going to wait for another year until it's so far down the road that there isn't, isn't any way to derail it. Anyway, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My comments tonight are more in the realm of thank-yous. One thank you to the city manager, who is always willing and able pleasantly, at least behind, at least in appearance, always pleasantly happy to assist in whatever troubles or emails, and I appreciate that. So the other is, Councilmember Bulkey had his head down. He was out doing some cleanup work over the weekend and had his head down and didn't see me go, and I was checking your work out. But anyway, really do appreciate you being out there in the public and helping with the community. Thank you.
Mr. Simpson?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Whalen?
Just a couple of things. I chaired the Economic Development Board's quarterly meeting this last Friday, where we had some great discussions. One was about workforce training and development, and we heard from all the college presidents from Tacoma Community College, Pierce College, Clover Park Technical College, and there was a representative there from Suffolk Lutheran University. But I was pleased that Lakewood continues to lead the charge, in a sense, by hosting two incredible facilities, Pierce College and Clover Park Technical College, well-represented. The other issue that was presented was a new website called investpiercecounty.com, and that went live in April. This was a developed site selection tool in partnership between the EDB and Pierce County, and it will provide incredible, I think, enhanced opportunity for companies outside the region to have a one-stop look at what sites are available for their particular business, the kinds of business they're looking to develop in Tacoma-Pierce County area. And it provides an opportunity as well for people to provide input and add additional commercial opportunities on the website through the Commercial Brokers Association, so that it really becomes a one-stop shopping tool. Lots of good data on there that have been developed, not only by the county, but also the cities around. I know Rebecca Newton has provided input to make the site even better. So that's a good tool that was kicked off this last month. And let's see. Another thing that I had a chance to do is I went to Shalane this weekend for the Jazz and Wine Fest. It's the second annual, which means they just started this thing two years ago, and it's grown, and it reminds me of the opportunity for us to think outside the box, as we have done and continue to do, to create events that are of value to the community and create a greater sense of community. It may be an opportunity for us to look at how we can put a signature stamp on the Colonial Center, and maybe that's something we can do for the South Sound, the South Sound Jazz Festival, and try to do something once a year where it really builds something that puts a stamp on the South Sound. There was just a few initial instigators that out two years ago, it was probably three or four years ago when they started it in Shalane, and it's grown and grown and grown to the point where there was a ton of community support for that, and it brought in tourism, and people were filling up the hotels, and of course, there were winery opportunities there. But it could be a great thing for us to really promote for the Colonial Plaza as a midsummer before the summer concert series, but something that really puts a stamp on it. So I throw it out there for some consideration. We've got an arts commission who's excited to do things for you, so think about that. That's it.
Thank you. Well, at risk of offending that hard-working arts commission, I got to mention that I'm underwhelmed by the art submissions, and perhaps we asked the wrong question instead of saying, "Bring us something." Tell them, give them, give the artists some parameters within which to work, because what I've seen, the number-one selection is two giant stainless steel feather banners. And nothing, nothing in that, nothing in the submission has anything to do with the Colonial Center, Lakewood's history, or Lakewood, the community. It's, could be anywhere. And so, you know, at risk of kind of pimping Mr. Whalen's claim, because he couldn't vote on this, you know, we could have some statues out there, Chief Leshy on one side, and August Kraus, who wouldn't let him be hung on army soil on the other, talking about the history of Lakewood. And I've seen Mr. Grandham's work, and it would, the bronzes, I would be wanting to spend more money, but nice bronzes would stand up for years and years, and I think add something to that. But I'm no art expert, I just know when I don't see it. The good news today, I was on a teleconference with the Association Defense Communities Federal Outreach and Advocacy Outreach, or vice versa, Committee, basically the federal lobbying committee. And as of last Thursday, the news out of the offices of Congressman Heck and Congressman Kilmer was that while DCEP is the number-one priority of Mr. Kilmer, who's an appropriator, and if those, I said, the South Sound Military Community Partnership, Elected Officials Council saw how Mr. Heck emphasized his support for that program, they didn't expect it to be in the markup. The markup of the, subcommittee markup has been completed, and while it doesn't specifically mention DCEP, Mr. Kilmer was successful in inserting $30,400,000, $30 million and a $400,000, in OEA's budget for, quote, "community projects," end quote. So whether that's amended, up by the Senate, or whether that's in there as a trade-off for a floor amendment to actually, because a floor amendment, you have to take the money from somewhere to appropriate it. We aren't sure, but that's good news. It recognizes the work that, that the folks at OEA have done. The building, the Pentagon is still not enthused about the DCEP program, but the word is that the Assistant Secretary, who is responsible while opposed, is a general principal, is not actively opposing it, as was the predecessor who was responsible, which was Lucian Niemeyer. So there may be a path there. So good lobbyists are working on that. So that's good news. A lot of activities this week. On Thursday, we had the SSMCP, Elected Officials Council, extremely well-attended. We had, at least at the top layer, all senior leadership from JBLM, from First Corps, from Seventh ID, the garrison, the hospital, and so that, I think that was a great success. Enjoyed participating in the volunteer appreciation event on Friday morning, even though that meant that I had a 7:30, you know how I love morning meetings? I had a 7:30 meeting every morning this week. I thought Ms. Dodsworth did a great job at coming up with a theme and making it kind of a fun event. So that was Friday. On Saturday, I was one of those people that took a kid without their parents. I took my seven-year-old grandson and four-year-old granddaughter to fish, and they had a great time. And I would like to note something, though. People don't, you know, it's the Ray Evans Memorial Fishing Derby, and I'd like every once in a while, it's been a couple of years, to say who Ray Evans was. Ray Evans was a longtime Lakewood resident, was relatively unassuming, a very, guy liked to fish, had a great affinity for the water, passed away in 2013, is buried at Mountain View Cemetery. His memorial service, the flag ceremony, was conducted by the Vice Commandant of the U.S. Coast Guard. He had a Marine Corps salute, because the Marine Corps held him in such high regard. He enlisted in the Coast Guard in 1939 with a buddy, and the Coast Guard's first major engagement in World War II happened to be a little place called Guata Canal. He was a coxswain on a Higgins boat, landing craft, and received the Navy Cross. His buddy wasn't so lucky, but received the Medal of Honor, the only ever Coast Guard recipient of the Medal of Honor, as they repeatedly went to shore to rescue pinned-down Marines. He later became a Mustang officer, served 23 years, retired as a highly respected commander, was a skipper of Coast Guard cutters, captain of the port of Houston. The Coast Guard has an annual award for the best coxswain. That's a boat driver for you Army guys, this guy that actually steers it, not the, not the guy who's in charge, the actual guy does work. And it's named after him, an annual award, as is U.S. Coast Guard Cutter Raymond Evans. So very outstanding Lakewood resident, and he was a great supporter of the kids' fishing. And so they renamed that after him, so we should remember that. Memorial services are coming up, as mentioned, the 27, I'm planning on attending the Tutu's service on the 22nd, First Special Forces Group on the 23rd, JBLM's, and Mountain View on the 27th, and Colonel Chung, the new Tutu Striker Brigade Commander, is speaking at the memorial, at the Mountain View Service on the 27th. So is there anything else to come before the council? Mr. Whalen?
Just in prep for the Arts Commission review, or at least the art project review on the 28th, I don't disagree with your comments. I think part of the challenge with the submission is they provided a budget limitation, and they were also told to do two big columns and a bunch of other stuff, and so you probably got some schlocky stuff, because the budget was advertised to be fifty, as opposed to perhaps a hundred, and that impacts it. One thing that might be helpful, if Sally can make it happen, is all of those folks would be chomping at the bit to give you a five-to-seven-minute discussion or explanation of their proposal. I don't know if that would be helpful. It's sometimes helpful to have interaction at a study session. It's up to you guys, if we could make that happen, if that would be of help, because otherwise, we kind of see what it is on paper, and it's a little bit static, whether it's a feather banner, or a face with funky hair, or whatever the heck, whatever the heck it is. It might be helpful, and I know they'd be willing and interested in doing that.
We had animals that are great, but kind of out of place.
Right.
Ghostbusters, feather banners.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I get it.
You looking for response?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I like that idea. Now, I'm, I'm not quite as harsh on the art proposal as our mayor, but, because I like the one with the faces. And I think that, because, and I think, as I said initially, that's a forward-looking piece of sculpture, and I didn't particularly dislike the original selection, because it is Lakewood in a very existential manner. But then again, I wander off and get an elbow here from the mayor about talking about that. But the point is, I think you've got a good idea. I would like to hear from the top three, if--
Explain their submissions.
Explain the submission to us, and how it, assuming we know what our parameters are, what we want, explain to us how that meets those.
Right.
I would, I would welcome that. And I also agree with you, Mr. Mayor. If we have to spend a little more money, then we spend a little more money.
Because we're going to be stuck with this for a long time. It's not like it's a piece of sidewalk.
Exactly, exactly.
You know, and people are going to haul us on the pin yard if we do something too crazy.
It's, it's right up front.
Yeah, you know, I, I, like the mayor, I sort of struggled to see Lakewood in the, in the--
In the reflections of Lakewood.
In the, the description of the recommended work. And I guess I'm interested in seeing what the scoring rubric was, and if the scoring rubric actually had some elements about how well does something represent the community or have a theme to be able to go and do that. So I think the more we can learn about the different proposals will, you know, help us feel good, and quite honestly, you know, when we think back to past pieces of art, public art, and, you know, the Lotus Blossom, and particularly the memorial here in front of the building, the Veterans Memorial, and then the piece of public art that eventually found its way at the Sounder Station. You get asked to explain it.
Right.
Okay? And, and so, as long as a presentation gives me something to say, okay. You know, I'm not the art, an art person, and so I may not be able to say that I agree with it, but I can at least say that I understand what the artist was trying to do.
Well, I can ask Sally to try to set that up through the city manager. I know that there may be one of the three that's out on vacation, so we'll just have to coordinate. And if it takes a little longer, my, my suggestion is, it takes a little longer, we want to get it right.
Even if we, somebody's gone and we--
Bring them the next time.
Have a five-minute video presentation or something.
Yeah.
Give them each five minutes, and not so much Q and A, but them--
Yeah.
Explaining what they did.
You okay with that? I think we've made it, so as long as you can coordinate it.
Five minutes apiece, and if they can't be here, send a video.
And then, Mayor, do you want to put them at the top of your agenda on May 28th? You also have a couple of other folks coming. I would suggest maybe, if it's okay, maybe we move the Joint Planning Commission meeting to your next study session on June 10th, if that works for their calendar, just given everything else you have.
That might be good for me, because I'm gone. I think that's one of the--
So for next week on the agenda, you have Hazard Mitigation Plan update from Pierce County Emergency Management, South Sound 911 Governance Update, so Mr. Nites will be here from South Sound 911, and then a Joint Planning Commission meeting, as well as reviewing and agreeing with the town, is still looking for electrical lights. That's pretty straightforward. And then we have another update for you regarding the city being a fiscal agent for Lakewood Choice, and then the art proposal.
Why don't we stick the art guys up front and just tell Mr. Nites and the others--
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we'll talk with your planning commission--
I think we tell them five minutes, and then we'll try to hold them to fifteen.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
If Jason's running the meeting, it'll be thirty.
Yeah, exactly, per submission.
Anything further? We're adjourned. I'm going to be gone the 10th.
And then, council, if we could maybe get a--
Sure.
You get a picture.